Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the committee of the whole meeting of May the 9th to order, please. Looking for approval of the agenda. Moved by Counselor Pearson. All right. Any comments, questions, or concerns? All those in favor, opposed, carried unanimously. And that leads us into a presentation. This evening, we have Mr. Lee Boyko present for P1 Sook Community Center Advisory Committee. Welcome, Mr. Boyko.
Thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening. The committee has been working for the past year on the idea of trying to find areas for facilities in Sook. The draft report recommendations I sent to you, hopefully had a chance to take a look at. I think the main things that have been coming out of our debates and discussions is that, one, that we leave in trying to support what we have. And thus, the Sook Community Hall is one of those items that we think needs support. They are looking at doing some major reorganization in their facility to make it more user-friendly and more adaptable to other groups. Maybe get moved materials out that don't need to be there. Being such a central location, using it for storage for stuff really doesn't make a lot of sense when that space could be used for activities and programming. The other things that we've been discussing in general have been, of course, the senior center. Throughout the discussion, during the discussion period, the Air Manor came forward and offered the opportunity for the senior centers to locate on their property. And that started moving forward, but stalled a bit when council purchased the new land because people were then saying, "Well, should we be waiting until whatever happens with that land happens?" And I think that's sort of one of the reasons why we're here tonight is to sort of start getting a bit of sense and a bit of feedback from council as to what direction they want to see. I wouldn't say we're necessarily spinning our tires a bit. I guess I feel that a bit more than some of the other committee members, but I do feel we're sort of at a point that we need to get some direction and some sense of where things might go. There's a number of opportunities to expand and develop programming in the community. As I said, supporting things like the community hall, looking at development of a town square type area, having recreational facilities, either a sea park or a new standalone building. The other concept that's in this report is the idea of a community quant set type of area, making use of the land down at Kaltasen Land for the idea of having a facility down there that can be used by groups to do everything from doing rehearsals to having storage and studio space rather than doing something in a higher-use, higher-end land of the downtown. With the purchase of the land that the District of Sook has and the possibility of the library going there and other types of things, it opens up the game much broader, much wider for terms of types of things that we could be doing. You know, maybe we're looking at an interesting mixed-use facility that combines all these type of activities that we're talking about, maybe even includes housing, social housing, and other types of things that could maybe help pay for some of these amenities. But I guess we're at sort of the point in the committee now that we want to get a bit of direction from council as to what area you want to go, where we'd like us to proceed and move forward on. We think there's lots of exciting opportunities right now. We think that, but we don't know what the appetite is for looking at building a brand-new central facility with all these type of things, or does it make more sense to have these in other areas? So, that's what this draft report talks a bit about, and that's why I'm here this evening and certainly open to trying to answer any questions and share with you any of the thoughts behind what we're talking about in this document.
Thank you, Mr. Boyko, both for introducing the report and for the report itself, and to all the committee members for their work on this matter. Any thoughts or observations from council members?
I'll lead off by saying, when I read in the report, I liked the idea of the community hall sort of being repurposed. It is a heritage building. There's a lot of personality to the building. It's ideally located. It's by the Legion. It's walkable. Everyone knows where it is. And, yeah, the idea that the bottom is used for storage when it's in this prime location, you know, the idea of moving storage into another area, you know, certainly sounds interesting. It also has an elevator. I guess the Legion's been trying for a long time to get an elevator in place. They're expensive, where this is a building that actually has one already intact. So, I like that idea. I know from when the Philharmonic has performed there, the acoustics in the upstairs are just amazing. It's lovely, and it certainly is a beautiful gathering space. The idea of repurposing the building is really unique, as well as considerations for parking within the vicinity and sort of having this as a community hub, I think would resonate well in the community. The library lands, yes, it's a new thing, but I still want the committee to keep working on. Otherwise, this will pause until that gets done, and then years go by and we still haven't gotten anything done. Meanwhile, the population will continue to increase. The needs are going to get more complicated, and we're still no further ahead, you know, whereas you have something that's well-used, well-respected. It just sort of makes sense to build capacity around it.
Can I just respond to that?
Yep.
Repurposing, but limited repurposing.
Yes, of course.
I think it would be clear that the community hall, and one of the things I'm most proud of at this whole process is we managed to get the community hall to send to council the letters outlining what they envisioned for the hall. And I think that's an important letter, and I know that it was passed on to council last fall. So, certainly, there'd be elements that we'd move out, but I do think that, you know, at this stage of council could get behind supporting at least the getting the design elements done. Once again, we know we're in a position, we know we're in a situation now where there's going to be infrastructure money coming down the pipe from the federal government. So, for them to have something ready to go, this is a good timing to do that.
The other thing that I'll add is, in terms of the senior center, is that's where Air Manor always seemed a fit because you have residents that are living there either independently or assisted. They're there, and those that are mobile can get there, whereas those that aren't as mobile, it's more difficult to get out without making transportation arrangements. And it is also well-situated in that areas as well. So, Air Manor also is shovel-ready to build another phase, and we're always sort of waiting for those funding to come to build out that phase. If it is possible to build capacity for like a seniors recreational component all there, it also makes sense. So, I like that idea as well. But I do want to hear what I, I just wanted to put that out there to get a conversation going here. So, Rick, then Brenda, then Kevin?
Yeah, I'd like to lend my support to the repurposing of the building, too, because, you know, when you look at what the potential dollars and cents are, and I only go back from just a cursory, quick glance by a qualified professional who actually came in, had a look at the building, spent a day, and based on his opinion for what could happen at that building in relation to other projects that this individual had worked on elsewhere in British Columbia, it seemed like a pretty decent option. And if you look at building brand-new, brand-new in today's, you know, economic times, you know, the cost per square foot could be drastically higher than what a repurpose would be. And also, you know, I don't know, when is the 80-year history, or is it in a couple of years?
Yeah, sorry, there's an error in there. It should have been, it's in next year is the 80th of the building opening.
Right, right. So, you know, I think maybe there's an opportunity to move forward and to do more work on what we could accomplish and try to get a firmer figure, and at the same time, maybe go out there and approach federal and provincial entities for some funding assistance on it. That's where I'm coming from. I think it's an opportunity.
Brenda?
I like the idea of refurbishing as well, the community hall. I was just wondering, when you refurbish it, I understand that they would be looking at the downstairs and not making the upstairs available for certain groups, like if it's for an art center or if it's for the seniors. That was what my understanding was, no?
Well, I certainly don't think that, I am nervous about the term "repurposing" throughout this discussion because it's refurbishing and making the facility better. Certainly don't, once again, they have outlined what it is they would support happening at the hall, and I think we need to, you know, honor that. And, no, there is certainly discussions about the possibility of doing some expansions. You know, we've looked at the parking lot side, whether there could be a bit more bump out that way. They would love to be able to get the washrooms upstairs as opposed to down the stairs because that makes it functionally difficult. They are, you know, I don't want to speak on behalf of the community association, but their primary purpose is supporting the sports community. That's what they were founded for and to do, and I think people need to remember that and realize that there's, it is being used a lot. Just because certain people don't see it being used doesn't mean it's not being used. And I really want to emphasize that for the hall. But it may well be that even just with getting that downstairs reorganized and maybe getting the kitchens reorganized and such, that it now becomes much more functional for other types of groups. And I certainly know they're not opposed to having other groups use it as, you know, the symphony is doing so for now, as long as they can fit it in with their timing of their primary clientele.
Right. So, in regards to that, when you, we speak of the other options to go out to, for the youth, for the seniors, these are recommendations for other places besides the community hall?
Yeah, I mean, there's still the, maybe opportunity to do something with the community hall, save for the seniors, and I certainly also for somebody who used stuff, I think there's opportunities there. But there's also some stuff on the table, especially with the seniors group. The Air's Manor is there, it's on the table. And I guess, I just think that we've got to make a decision fairly soon which direction we're going to go. There's still, work has to be done in terms of developing the business plans for the operations, and there's still maybe a bit of discussion there. If we refurbish this, can that meet those needs? But I think we've got to be in a position that within the next few months, we're going to say, "No, this is the direction we're going to go." But as I said, one of the things that stalled this process, because up until the purchase of the land, and I realize that shouldn't have necessarily stopped us from doing things, but up to that point, we were sort of having areas that seniors going to air, will do something with the community hall. But then, you know, people in the community and in general says, "Well, you've got the land there, why aren't you planning to build one big central type of stuff?" So, we need some direction that if council can see that happening, well, then we look at it differently. But if council doesn't see that happening in the short term, we've got some immediate needs that need to be met. So, then we would say, "Okay," you know, I'm not, I'm saying that probably the committee would say, "Let's get Air Manor on the go. Let's get the community hall." I know that committee definitely wants to get the community hall stuff going on the go now, and we can see what can fit in there.
Counselor Pearson, then Loggins?
Yeah, thank you for your presentation, and I think it's the, how many times it's come to the table in the last four years? You know, it is, it is central to Sook, and I think the key word there is refurbishment, and there's some value, there's some intrinsic value to that building. You know, the license to occupy with, you know, the number of people, and like I think Counselor Casper mentioned earlier, we start getting into building a new building with the rules and regulations, and we would be in an economic bad place. But I really support the idea of refurbishment and it being central to the community. And I think there's a lot of emotional attachment to it. So, I think that people see it as value from its, from preserving it as well. So, I think it's significant for us to move forward with that.
Just on, I mean, occasionally, I hear people say, "Well, you can tear it down, build something new there." I just can't see the additional value you're going to get from that. I'm restricted, because it is a restricted amount of land. I just don't, you're not going to get any real additional value by building on that site again.
Exactly.
And you're certainly not going to duplicate an amazing wood floor like that, an open space like that, you know, it would be very challenging to do. So, certainly, and obviously, being a heritage person myself, I support heritage and, you know, and so the only way you can protect something like this, since we don't have a heritage bylaw in this municipality, is by actively going out and putting the money forward and making sure that a place like this stays viable.
Yeah, good. Thank you, thank you for that.
Counselor Loggins?
Thank you. Thanks for coming here and discussing this. I think it's very timely that we have this discussion between the committee and council. But I'm finding the conversation today very limited to just the community hall. It is very important, I think, that that's a top priority because it solves a lot long, short-term, and it's something that needs to happen regardless. So, supporting the community hall is, to me, a top priority. However, that doesn't solve the problem, which is that we have a lot of things to fit into several or one location, locations. So, we may increase the capacity at the community hall, but it's not going to be enough to accommodate everything that the community is looking for. So, that is why there are other locations and facilities recommended as short-term options, and also why there is the recommendation of the long-term option of new lands, or if it's not the one we newly purchased sometime in the future. But I guess essentially, the committee needs direction on what can fill all of the gaps, not just a portion of it. Because really, by rebuilding, or not rebuilding, refurbishing the community hall, we're going to be building more capacity but not filling gaps, if that makes sense. So, there is a lot more to this conversation than just the hall.
No, that's a, that's a very good point. Counselor Casper?
Yeah, just for your benefit, Lee, and the members of council and the public, at the last Recreation Commission meeting, there was actually a presentation by the seniors to the Recreation Commission, and there was direction given to have the seniors group work with the Sea Park staff and contact the district staff in regard to the feasibility of them actually locating at Sea Park. So, they actually made a pitch to the Recreation Commission at the last meeting, and I just thought you should be aware of that.
Certainly aware, but I think clarification needs to be, that was for short-term purposes and interim before.
That hadn't really been stated because they hadn't determined what the options would be, whether they would be long-term or short-term. And the discussions they were to have with the Sea Park staff was to look at more detail, budgeting, how much money is available, and also what land, in fact, is available at Sea Park, both for short-term and long-term. But no decision had been made by the commission, so.
Certainly, my understanding from discussions with the representatives from the seniors group on our committee was, we were talking short-term in terms of having a, like a portable being on-site that can be used until such time as another facility. Certainly, Sea Park, the possibility of expanding on Sea Park is certainly one of the parts of the discussions out there, you know, both from an operational point of view and the fact that that's where there was land. But I would, I don't think I'm wrong in saying that the seniors group, if they rather, if they could get into Air Manor tomorrow or start the process of building there, they would like to do that, but they're also looking for some interim space at the time. And I think that's probably still where their priority would be, would be my guess.
Counselor Berger?
Yes, thank you, and thank you for coming, Mr. Boyko. And I got the same take. The presentation was definitely geared at, sorry, at the Sea Park Board was definitely geared to, is there land available, are there funds available? But as the conversation ensued, the feeling that I got was exactly as you stated, that it was too far removed from the town core for people, and that Air Manor was, of course, their first, their first choice. I love the idea of renovating the community hall and looking at the possibilities that we have there. I'm wondering what sort of direction, as we're only committee of the whole right now, what sort of direction we need to maybe give staff at looking at, or if it goes through staff, but to look at what possible grants maybe could arise for a design or construction of the, of the community hall? I read, sorry, I don't have the page, but I read somewhere in the report that that was one of the suggested actions, was that the District of Sook look at design costs, so we could be shovel-ready for any grants that may arise. And it's also my understanding that the community hall doesn't currently qualify for heritage status due to its siding. I heard that somewhere, and I don't know if that's accurate.
The reason that they don't qualify for heritage is because you don't have a Heritage Act in this district. The only, the only way that you can have a heritage designation is if you have a heritage bylaw within.
Your municipality.
Municipality, and this municipality doesn't have a heritage bylaw. There's certainly buildings that have all sorts of sightings on it, and as somebody who was actually involved in writing the heritage legislation, that's one previous to what is now in the province, I can certainly tell you that it does not totally restrict you from doing other things to your building. There are ways of adapted and use, and that is done within the heritage field. Sometimes, people are very afraid that if it gets heritage designation, it means they're not going to be able to touch it again, and they can't have the wrong siding. You can.
There's flexibility.
There's flexibility, yes.
Right. So, I wanted then, just for our own discussion purposes, where we could maybe look at any possible motions as far as getting ready for grants or designs, that maybe that this topic could be put on a regular council agenda, and just could be simple as the renovation or design of a community hall, and we could discuss it as a, as a sitting council, so any recommendations could come out of that.
Yeah, so, recommendation then, Counselor Berger, if you wanted to sort of frame that then, would be that the committee of the whole, direct staff, to bring a report to council on the potential refurbishment of the community hall.
Yeah, I think it's very, I mean, the topic is so vague right now.
Yep.
But I think for the topic to be brought to council, so we can discuss whether or not there are any, I mean, it could be very simple as to, we can make a motion to staff to look to see if there's any grants coming up.
Okay. Do you want to frame something there, or Mr. Joseph?
I'm counting on Mr. Joseph to put the right words in my mouth here. But for us to bring this topic to council for any possibility of, look for the possibility of grants. Mr. Howard's writing, too, so one of them will.
Yeah, we're just.
We'll tweak my words.
Yeah, once, we're just getting that up on the screen there, and then.
I just don't want to limit the conversation. I just think.
No.
This topic needs to come to our council table, so we can look at what's possible, if anything. I mean, our budget may restrict us that we can't do anything this, this year, or.
Might I suggest that there is some money in your budget for community facilities? There is some money in there, and certainly for the initial design stage, that would be necessary to move forward. To get larger grants to actually do the work, you're going to need that initial piece. And I really think that's what the community association is looking for at this stage, is, is that initial piece of money to help them get that design operation undone.
Yeah, I agree, and thank you, Mr. Joseph. That looks perfect.
Is this your motion, then, Counselor Berger?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, we're committee of the whole, so there's no seconders. So, we'll speak to this motion. Counselor Pearson?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that we, on last council, we employed Mr. Clarkston and his company to go in there and do sort of a general layout with the former mayor. I thought we did some kind of preliminary layout and looking at the downstairs kitchens and things like that in the storage room. I thought they did some kind of, taking it out to the walls.
I think it had to do, I think that part has been completed, though, because the bathrooms were expanded and there was some jigging to the dining room area.
But I thought there was a bigger plan that they looked at more.
Okay, well, I think with this motion, if it passes, then staff can look for that report and sort of pull it all together for us when, when it's ready to come back.
Okay.
Any discussion, Counselor Parkinson?
Would it be a good idea for us to have a heritage bylaw to apply for other grants that come forward?
If I may, Counselor Parkinson, I think that's a good discussion point, but I want to just clear, this motion's, and then we can have another discussion about that, if you could speak to this motion. Any discussion on this motion? All those in favor, opposed, carried unanimously. Now, Counselor Parkinson regarding the heritage bylaw.
I just thought maybe we should have a policy on it. I don't know.
Yeah, no, I agree. That was sort of another piece was looking at that. So, that could be a separate motion that, you know, not, I don't want the creation of the bylaw to hold this process up, but another sort of action item for staff to work on would be to bring forward the idea of a heritage bylaw. Would you like to make that motion, Counselor Parkinson?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Is that what you're typing, Mr.? Okay.
I was, I was just curious with Lee whether he knows of a number of grants through the museum, whether we could apply for because we would have a heritage bylaw, if that, that's the reason for it.
Yeah.
There's certainly, the Heritage Foundation of B.C. does do some funding for heritage buildings, and there are other ones out there. There's some federal stuff, too. Not huge dollars, but there are some. And certainly, it also becomes a selling point for types of things. But I, when we've finished with this item, I would like to also talk about a bit more stuff in the report, if we've got some time, so.
Any discussion on this motion? The staff provide a report to council on the creation of a heritage bylaw. All is in favor, opposed, carried unanimously, okay. We just have a couple more minutes?
Yeah, I just want to, you know, emphasize the point that the community hall is only a small part of this.
Yes.
And there are other things in there that we need to be, you know, talking about. I'm not hearing an appetite around the table to be looking at building a big new structure at this point, but I could be wrong about that. But I'm looking for direction to the committee, so we can go back and say, "Okay, yes, let's focus on Air Manor as an example. Let's focus on the other elements that we talked about in here," and not necessarily focus on a big new build. I'm making, I'm sort of prejudging, and I'm sorry, I shouldn't be doing that, but I'm trying to get that sort of sense from you, so we can, we can focus our efforts.
What I'm sort of hearing here is, is to build capacity, so I would recommend the committee, and counselors can comment as well, that you have the committee hall piece to look at the Air Manor, the Kaltasen work yards. Once the library gets going, there is going to be a consultation process with that. So, that'll be another avenue then to examine, okay, another gap, perhaps a youth-related something, or meeting space, or whatever, when that timeline comes. So, whoops, those items will continue to move. And then, of course, if there's announcements about, "Okay, here's a big, build a new building," of course, that's going to change things, but I would just encourage the committee to continue to work because there's some really good ideas here. Sea Park is undergoing, they're, they're doing new things as well, so just as these different things. But I don't think one building is going to meet everyone's needs in this community. Seems to me that we're a diverse community, and different buildings are going to provide different functions and solve different problems and fill different gaps as they come along. Counselor Ray?
Thank you. And I think one of the aspects of looking, when we did the survey, the information that came back was something, the need for 16,000 square feet. You're looking at over $5 million to build a structure of that size. And so, I think we have to look at, you know, see what the community hall looks like. We may be able to find a fair amount, but I think we should still be looking at those other options and exploring what other areas might work. But myself, I think it's, it would be a great deal of debt if we tried to do a multi-facility.
Counselor Loggins?
Counselor Ray brings up a good point about the square footage. That's how much that the community not just wants but needs. So, the community hall is not that large. So, we need to fill the rest of the community with that remaining space. So, the group has done a good job of putting these things together, but we need to take a good look at these other portions, not just the hall, and help the group. I guess what I mean is, where do they go from here? If we just sit here and say, "Yeah, these are good ideas," that doesn't do anything. It doesn't move the discussion forward. So, we need to kind of work together maybe a little harder and maybe put a bit more time than just a half-hour discussion into this, and figure out how to really flesh out these ideas and make them tangible.
If I can, your worship, just to respond to Counselor Loggins. That was my point. I don't see us building a $5 million facility, so it's looking at other options and looking at stuff like Air Manor.
Well, I think we're, I'm hearing the Air Manor piece, the community hall piece, so I think let's get those ones underway and then have another follow-up conversation like this, once those reports go. Like if, now, I will. Like if, now, it depends on the debate at the time, but if they pass, then you're going to roll forward with the one on the community hall. If it doesn't, then council needs to have another conversation about where do we go, but I think it's getting that in, and then within the next quarter, once that piece rolls or doesn't roll, that we come back and have another conversation, and we should probably start meeting more frequently rather than, this is the first time we've had this conversation, and it is an important one. So if we can look at having that, maybe a dialogue before the summer, by then we're halfway through our fiscal year, and we can have a greater, a larger conversation, we'll also know more about the library at that time. Okay, so I'm just, yes, Ms. Sullivan?
If I may just add to the conversation, as we go through the public consultation with respect to the library build, there is community space available in the library, and I would encourage the committee to work very closely with us as we go through that public consultation process.
Yeah, excellent, thank you. Okay, so on that note then, I would like to adjourn the Committee of the Whole, and we'll just take a short recess and switch into regular council.